Okay, well, it is 7:06 and we'll start this meeting of the City of Kenmore Planning Commission on June 15th. First item of business is public comments. Are there any citizens who want to share any comments with us at this time?
I don't see any attendees.
Okay, well, we will move on to our next item, which is approval of the minutes from the June 1st Planning Commission meeting.
So moved.
So moved, second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on approving the June 1st meeting minutes. Any discussion on those minutes? Teal, you want to go ahead? We have to do with the roll call votes, so if you could go ahead and do that, that would be...
Yeah, Chair Orangeall.
Yes.
Vice Chair Vanderland.
Hi.
Commissioner Banaginski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lautzes.
Hi.
Commissioner Greathouse.
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson.
Hi.
Commissioner Olson.
Hi.
Okay, the minutes pass unanimously, so thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is the land use element update, countywide center, downtown heights and densities, and recap with TOD discussion. So, good evening Lori and Debbie, welcome you guys to take it away from here.
Shall I go ahead Debbie or?
Go ahead Lori. Say tonight, there's just going to be a couple of policy questions around downtown, and those are outlined in your packet, but I'm sure Lori's going to go over the highlights with you now.
I am. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, there are basically two policy questions in front of you. First has to do with Kenmore becoming a candidate countywide center. And then the second question is whether there should be some emphasis on requiring a minimum commercial density in the heart of downtown. So we'll start with the countywide center, and we want to do that because we hope to take a planning commission recommendation forward to the city council when they'll be considering this on July 12th. So we're really hoping for some direction this evening, if you feel ready to do that. So I thought I'd start by just reading the definition of a countywide center. They are to serve important roles as places for equitably concentrating jobs, housing, shopping, and recreational opportunities. These are often smaller downtowns, high-capacity transit station areas, or neighborhood centers that are linked by transit, provide a mix of housing and services, and service focal points for local and county investment. And that's kind of the heart of the matter. If a place is a center in this whole designation hierarchy of different kinds of centers, then your priority is increased for funding, and primarily transportation funding. So that's the attraction. It just makes a place more significant in the overall scheme of growth. Now, we're certainly not talking about being an urban center like Seattle or Bellevue, or even some of the other larger growth centers like Bothell Canyon Park or Toom Lake. This is a new designation that just is coming up through this iteration of the countywide planning policies. And in fact, the Growth Management Planning Council, which is the body that chooses the centers, isn't going to be able to do that for another, I think they said four or five years, when they update the countywide planning policies. So they've created this kind of interim step called a candidate countywide center, and they're doing that because there are a couple rounds of transportation funding before the Growth Management Planning Council can make the formal designations. So for Kenmore, the logical boundaries of a candidate countywide center would be the boundaries of downtown. And we had that map in your last packet, and I included it in this packet as attachment three. So it basically is the heart of downtown. It includes areas both on the north and south side of SR 522, mostly downtown commercial, downtown residential, and then the mixed-use zonings down, including Lake Point, for example. And that downtown area happens to be 222 acres, which fits nicely into the size a countywide center is supposed to be, which is somewhere between, I think it's 150 and 500 acres. And then we asked the Puget Sound Regional Council staff to give us information on activity units. And activity units, I don't know why they use this measure, but it's a combination of jobs and population that gives you an indication of the density of an area. And so a candidate countywide center is maybe going to have 18 dwelling units per acre, striving to be 30, or not dwelling, 18 activity units per acre versus 30 activity units in the future. That's the goal. That's what you need to achieve if you are really thinking you want to be a countywide center. So they did the calculation for us, and in 2019, so not 2021, 2019, we were at 15 activity units, again based on our employment and our population. And that's an increase from 2014, when we were at 12.6 activity units. And then, so we're a little shy of the 18, but in this candidate countywide center option, we're given the ability to not quite be to the 18. And then we looked at the Lake Point site, because that's our biggest undeveloped property, to see, well, what would happen if Lake Point over the next 20 years were to develop? So we have an estimate of what the capacity is. We know how many housing units, we know how many jobs, and it would take us to approximately 32 activity units. So we could achieve that 30 activity unit requirement for a countywide center. And that's if Lake Point developed, which we hope will happen over the next 20 years. And it doesn't even include any other development in downtown. And there's a lot of vacant and redevelopable property downtown. So I guess my perspective was that the city could achieve the required activity unit numbers for downtown, and we have the appropriate balance of jobs and housing to make that possible. So a couple other things that the countywide, the framework for the countywide center requires are a market study, and we don't have a recent market study of downtown. But we do have a recent market study for Lake Point. There was an analysis done to see whether a feasible development could be built at Lake Point, and those in fact are the very numbers that we're using for looking at activity units. So I think development at the scale that we would need is certainly feasible. The other thing that the countywide center criteria recommend are that you do a subarea plan. We don't have to do that as a candidate, and in fact, they've said that if you have an element or chapter in your comprehensive plan that addresses your countywide center, you're doing just fine. And we have a downtown sub-element in the comp plan that speaks to the very area that we're talking about. So for all those reasons, and because Kenmore is now identified as a high-capacity transit community by the, by Vision 2050, the multi-county policies, all these layers of stuff, staff is recommending that we do submit a request to become a candidate countywide center. And what that would mean would be that over the next years, we're looking at land use, and we could even take more time if we needed it, we would refine the downtown sub-element to say we're a countywide center, and here's why, and make some tweaks to our comprehensive plan to acknowledge that we can in fact become a county, and should become a countywide center eligible for this additional funding priority in the region. So that is the staff recommendation, and you probably have questions.
Anybody want to kick it off with some questions?
Well, I'll jump in. Lori or Debbie, I was looking at the numbers for where it looks like we would expect to be in terms of activity units for development without Lake Point versus what it would be with Lake Point. How, without Lake Point, is it feasible that we could make the number? How big a heavy a lift is it without Lake Point?
Well, it's, to achieve it, to achieve it with Lake Point, we were estimating, and let me get the exact numbers here, so I'm giving you the right, right numbers. So 1,530 jobs and 989 housing units. So without Lake Point, it would be a heavy lift. There's, you know, there are several big parcels remaining in downtown, but I don't know that there's enough to achieve that degree of activity.
Well, thank you. That was, that was my read too. It looked like we, we would be needing to go from something like 18 to 30, which is a pretty big lift, as you say. So I think that's something we need to keep in mind.
Yeah. I think, you know, the long-term plan always has been that Lake Point would develop as a mixed-use, pretty intensive, it's nearly 40 acres area. So again, I don't think it's impossible for the city to achieve that.
No, I think there's capacity on that site. It's just a question, we haven't seen any movement on that site at all. I don't, I haven't heard there's any interest in it, so. And I know from all the experiences we've had over the last few years on the commission that there are good reasons for that. So I don't, I'm not clear what would change going forward. So it kind of colors the thought and the work process and resource commitment of something that may be a pretty high, low probability of success. But I understand we want it, we want to give it a try, but...
Yeah, there is another person of interest on the site. So there continues to be interest in the development community. I know that the, we were very hopeful that the previous developer would be able to move forward, and that did not happen. But right away, within a year, now there's another possibility.
Lori, what would be the downside of doing this?
Well, I suppose, I mean, there's not really a downside to doing it unless the community really felt that we don't want to step forward and be acknowledged as a center. I mean, there really isn't a downside. The upside is that we might get the financial benefit. I suppose if we didn't, if, as Commissioner Vanderland is saying, if over the next 20 years, you know, by 2044, if Lake Point hasn't developed, they might say, well, you guys are a terrible countywide center, and we're going to pull your designation. I mean, I don't even know what they would do.
It's not like we would get a fine or any kind of negative thing. So I, I feel like it's kind of a winning proposition. I can't see a reason why we wouldn't do it, but I'd be interested to hear what the other commissioners think.
Well, there's no real, there's no real cost, and it sounds like, I think we talked about this maybe earlier, I mean, there's no real cost in terms of staff time or the application itself, right? I mean, it's...
It's, I think the application, they say it should be three to five pages, and we would need to, you know, provide information that explained why we thought we should be a candidate countywide center, but it's not.
So no real city, no significant city resource to pursue this way? Is there a chance that they could say, no, you're not going to be a candidate? Will it be a competitive thing? Are there a lot of other, you know, cities?
Yeah, for this one, they've said it's not competitive. They, they just are looking at the whole framework and trying to make sense of growth and where funding should go to support growth that's expected. But there's no limit. We're not competing with anyone. It is, I will say, it is different from like an urban center. Urban center is like a very, very intensive designation. And you, to become something like that, you really have to commit that you are going to greatly increase your density and, and, you know, do all these things, because you're really a regional growth center. This isn't the same thing.
Go ahead Dwight.
So that actually starts to answer the question that I had. I'm concerned about if there's any environmental impact that is an unintended consequence to going after this.
Yeah. I don't know of any. We would not have to change any of our current designations to achieve what the standards that they've set out. For example, Lake Point is, we already have a vision for Lake Point, that zoning is already in place. Downtown, we already have a vision for downtown, the zoning is in place. We may tweak it, and certainly this discussion, this next discussion we're going to have about downtown, we may decide to tweak the zoning or make some modifications, but it's not a huge change, like it would be if we were committing to be, to Kenmore becoming an urban center. That would be a dramatic change, and that is not this.
Hey, go ahead Tracy.
First, I saw Nathan had his hand up before. Nathan, did you still have something you wanted to say?
Oh, I think Commissioner Greathouse's question answered what I was thinking. I was just curious if there'd be any penalties if we didn't reach the goals in time, but it sounds like there wouldn't be. So, you know, I don't see a downside to it either.
Okay, and then I'll go ahead. So it, in my read of it, it seems like the vision for the, being a countywide center seems to match pretty well the vision that we've been talking about for our downtown and our 522 corridor. So it seems like a logical and positive step from that direction. Like I couldn't, I can't see any discordance between what we've been talking about and what this seems to be. I did have the same question that Mike had about whether we could achieve this without Lake Point, that I wondered about that, just because I know that Lake Point hasn't developed over the past decades, and there are lots of environmental, I think, reasons why that hasn't happened, and it's still, and it seems like, like the reasons that it hasn't been developed are because it's hard to develop there, and it's contaminated, and there's just all sorts of problems there. So I just wondered about like, could we do this without Lake Point? That was one, one thought. And then the other was, do we have the ability to, it looks like the area that would, that we would propose to be the acreage for the center includes downtown all the way to the Semamish River. And I had been thinking last week when we talked, or last two weeks ago, when we talked about the TOD is like wanting to kind of like pull our development away from those critical areas, including the Semamish River, and like wanting to maybe focus, think about focusing only north of 175th. So I'm wondering, I'm wondering like how much room we have to play with what the, what we would commit to developing as part of our committed acreage? Or maybe if we, if we can have different kinds of zoning laws for different parts of the acreage that we include, or how that would work?
Yeah. So the designating Kenmore as a countywide center doesn't mean the zoning has to change. It doesn't, you don't have to put a matching zoning over the whole area. So all of our current different types of zonings would still apply. It also doesn't affect our critical area protections, which are in place already around Lake Washington and the Semamish River. So those buffers and development requirements, which were just adopted two years ago, are still in place and would be in full force. So it's not, it doesn't infringe on that in any way. So I think, I think to Commissioner Vanderland's point, without Lake Point, it would be difficult for us to do that, but I also don't think it's unrealistic to expect that Lake Point will develop over the next 20 years. It's a huge piece of very valuable property on the lake, and we all know that the region is growing like crazy, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. That was very helpful, kind of putting this in the terms of my former career. It sounds like what we used to call pay for reporting versus pay for performance, that we're expected to provide a reasonable effort and operate in good faith, and in the meantime, we might get some more money out of it without necessarily being at risk for, for going in the future. So that's fine. But I do still think that it's good to keep in mind that if we set expectations, particularly at the state level or the county level, that we are going to achieve this over a period of time, we know that we may fail. And what would Plan B look like? Or would we just walk away? So I just, that would be a very uncomfortable situation, I think, for the city to be in. It may not be 20 to 25 years down the line. But it worries me, but I can't see any reason, from what we said right now, and you've told us that it would keep us from doing this.
So is that basically like a reputational risk? Is that what you're thinking, Mike? That Kenmore could be seen as worth...
Well, it's nice to take all that money upfront, and if we frustrate the powers that be down the line, how are they going to feel about us for money in the future? If we start, if we begin to put ourselves out there as this sort of community that's seeking these goals and is going to make this, and we do the work that's going to be needed with the population, and then somewhere down the line, it's, oh, never mind. That sets an, that sets, you know, a bad situation for the city to have to deal with, particularly if what ends up doing is we say, well, we couldn't do it on Lake Point, so let's look how we squeeze some more out somewhere else. And we seek to achieve the goals, but we, we have to try, we decide we need to try and make it up. I could see there'd be pressure to do that outside of Lake Point, and that could be significant. So it's just some uncomfortable unknowns that, some things you just can't over-anticipate into the future, but I could see, I could see how this could be issued.
Okay, Dwight and Nathan have their hands up.
So, you know, I think that the 20-year outlook, I'm not too concerned about that. I'm more concerned about the good faith issue, that if we took this on, that we're going to do what we can do in good faith to make it happen. Who knows? Maybe my, my perspective of the plywood supply company may, may turn in reverse, and they may sell, and all of a sudden, we have the, the units and the space. I mean, there's a lot of unknowns over the, over 20 years. We would have never, I mean, excuse me, the pandemic certainly is a 100-year cycle, but there are many 20-year cycles that we just don't know what's, what's ahead for us. I think if it, if it meets the criteria for our overall livability issues, and that it makes sense on a planning perspective that we're going to, that if we had what we wanted, which is Lake Point as an example, that then this is what would happen anyway, and we're going to work toward that in some reasonable fashion. I don't think that the county and other cities in 20 years are going to look at us as to say, well, you know, you took the money, you didn't do anything. Well, I think it's, it's not, it's more than that. I think it's what we did in good faith, and if we do things in good faith, I think that the electeds are going to be okay with that. And, you know, we don't know what's going to happen in 20 years and what the crisis financially will be, but it's something worth taking the risk.
I agree.
Go ahead Nathan.
So Lori, I had a question about this process. Do we submit kind of a border of where we're thinking at the beginning of this, and that's what we stick with through? Or is it possible to kind of expand this region that you had discussed, you know, fit perfectly around the downtown area, and expand it or contract it how we feel necessary or fit in the future?
Yeah, I think because we would be applying as a candidate, and because it's recognized that we're just starting our planning process for this update, that there would be some flexibility in boundaries if we needed to do that. By the time we get to the end of the process, the boundaries would have to be firm, and because that's the point at which we might be officially designated, and we would need to have real facts and figures.
Of course. I guess my thinking there is, you know, say Lake Point doesn't end up working out. I hope that's not the case, but if it doesn't in the future, if, you know, it would be possible to maybe expand the border to incorporate the TOD, to maybe get our numbers to reach a certain point, or something like that, if you think that's possible later on down the road, depending on the circumstances that we're presented with.
Right, right. Well, we update our comprehensive plan every eight years, and similarly, the countywide planning policies are amended, and Vision 2050 will be amended. So planning is always an art, and it's always responsive to the future. So I think it would be unrealistic to expect that once we said something, it would be set in stone for 20 years.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because that was something that crossed my mind as, you know, potential alternative.
Yeah, this may be an unanswerable question, but would this, if this designation, you know, goes through, and especially if there might be some transportation funding, would this have any material effect on, you know, a developer looking at Lake Point? Is there any indication that it might, you know, be one factor, obviously among many others, but any, any ideas?
Yeah, it's an impossible question. Certainly, you know, if, if Lake Point requires some sort of transportation improvements, and if there were, if the city could make a reasonable application for that funding as a countywide center to achieve our goal, maybe, maybe it would help.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead Mike.
Yeah, I wanted to talk for a minute about the language in the policy question. Very understandable, but we're talking about at the end here, buildings in the downtown core. And I think we have a conceptual idea of what that is, but I would feel more comfortable if we could be more specific about what we mean when we say downtown core, if we're going to be making a recommendation of the city council, and eventually making a proposal. So for instance, what zones does that include, or even the map that has lines on it, that we refer to it?
Yeah, it's attachment three, and, and I, I don't actually refer to the downtown core in this discussion. I do in the downtown heights and densities, the second policy question. And in that case, I'm talking specifically about a zoning district downtown commercial. If it would help, I can always try to do the old chair screen here, and we can look at the map.
Well, no, I understand, we may have an understanding of this. I'm just not sure, I'm looking at your downtown heights and density policy question.
Yeah, that's the one where we talk about downtown core, right?
And I'm looking at that last two words there, downtown core.
Yeah, and I could show you, that's specifically the downtown commercial zoning district, and I can show you where that is.
When we make our recommendation, can we be specific about what downtown core means?
Yeah, yeah, and this is not the recommendation to the city council. The countywide center recommendation is the one that will move forward to the city council. You don't have to, we're not to the point of recommending anything about downtown heights and densities.
Just want to make sure we're being specific about this.
So I can't help but ask this question. And one of the areas on the environmental list that I've been talked to by a whole variety of people, and I know that many of you have had the same discussion with a lot of the constituents, and that is the cement plant. So I can't help but ask the question, what effect could this have on that cement plant?
I can tell you what the dream is. The dream is that a developer will come to Lake Point, and the cement plant will provide all the... I, I can tell you what the dream is. The dream is that a developer will come to Lake Point. And the cement plant will provide all the concrete and then the property values will go up enough that the cement plant will find that it maybe. Is more helpful to relocate and redevelop. But who knows? They've been there a long time. They're a nonconforming use, which means that they don't match the existing zoning. But they can continue their operation at this time.
But should it convert, just for a moment, just dream, dream. Well, I heard it. If it were to convert the units that we're talking about as far as the credits of this and that. That would be a good thing, wouldn't it? I'm talking about the credits that we would get for this new.
Yes.
Okay. I'm writing down. Right, I know there's no, there's really no audience here, so I can do these gestures. That, you know, it's, it's another way to look at things and, and. And just because I'm a little bit of a realistic sort and, and. When we pass this on to the city council, I, I'm in the view that I want to. I think that we as a commission should. In first hope that they're going to accept our recommendation, of course. But two is that we do it in a manner that is, is going to be a little more congruent. To the majority of how the, the, the council sees things so that. We do some of the work that needs to be done to make it easier to pass. And that it meets our, the seven of us and how we feel. Kenmore should look that we're good with it too. So that's, you know, I'm just trying to think out of the box here of other ways to say. You know, 20 years is a long time. Who knows what's going to happen? And maybe we should take a little bit of, put a step forward and, and do something that might make a difference.
Well, the, the plant is in the area identified as the downtown. Again, it's a nonconforming use, so the expectation is that redevelopment would eventually occur. And in terms of. Providing information to the city council, probably the map is the one piece of information beyond the activity unit information. That they would need to see.
All right, well, anything else? Do we need to take a vote? Is that what you're looking for? Not just a head nod and you need a. About any, any more discussion? Is there anything else anybody wants to bring up before we go to, go ahead, go ahead, Mike?
Does the staff have a. A draft motion for us?
Uh, no, but I could make up a draft motion. The planning commission could move to nominate Kenmore as a candidate countywide center.
It's that simple.
I think it's that simple.
Yeah, and so whatever the planning commission recommendation is, we would then going to be going to the council and saying, this is what the planning commission recommends. And we're also going to say this is also what the staff recommends. So we're going to be having this same conversation. Although it's not really required to do so in terms of submitting the candidate paperwork, it's highly recommended that you make sure that you have alignment. With the council. So that's why we're kind of doing this two-step process. We're checking in with the planning commission as the. Comp plan policy recommending body to the council and then go to the council.
So then my, if that's a simple motion, what backup will you need from us? In addition to that. In, in what manner?
So I don't really think we need backup from you. You've seen the materials that we provided and those are the same. Materials we would present to the city council. Along with your recommendation to give them a picture of what we're talking about.
So then what you're saying is, is that if any of us felt. Particularly moved by certain issues that we as independent and private members of. The city and with, by chance, members of the. Commission can write a letter in support. The motion to. The members of the council, which would be appropriate.
That would not be typical. Usually the planning commission comes to either a consensus or a vote. To forward the recommendation of the whole commission and then individual commissioners. Stand with the full commission's recommendation and do not make. Separate recommendations. I, I know in the past, we've had some contested.
I, I never meant ever to say. A different recommendation. No, I'm talking about. Making several of us see maybe things from individual perspectives. That support the recommendation, not, not a minority opinion against the recommendation. To make a point to the, the, the council that a couple. Areas that maybe some of us individually might feel. We do want to bring to their attention of why we voted and support. The planning commission's position. And because a motion by itself is not necessarily. Indicate all of the. Conversation and mindset of, of the members of the commission. So I did not want. Anyone to think I was talking about minority opinion, not at all. I was thinking of just. Supporting the commission as a whole and with individual concepts of why. This is a good idea.
So I would recommend probably not doing that. I think it will be potentially confusing for the city council. I would recommend that if you have comments that you would like to make as a group. That you provide those in the meeting and we will forward them as part of the planning commission recommendation.
Well, we're not prepared to do that tonight.
Oh, okay.
I, I'm willing to, but on the other hand, if you can hold sending it formally to the, to the. Also. Or to our next meeting, I could maybe have some ideas on that line, but I have no problems. Voting for the motion tonight. I just want to be clear about that.
Okay, yeah, we cannot hold the recommendation if you're ready to make a recommendation because of the timing of the city council packet. We need to send that, prepare that and get that sent out before your next meeting.
Lori, are you planning to bring up, you know, to Dwight's point, some of the points that were made in favor of not just that we endorsed it, but that here are some of the reasons. Why we thought it was a good idea when you present to the council?
Um, we, we certainly can. I, I can add that. I can add that to the agenda bill and talk about some of the points that you raised. That's kind of what I was recommending to Commissioner Thompson, that if you had specific points, you wanted to go forward. Beyond just support for the motion, which I think I'm hearing. We could include that in the memo.
Our, our discussion is being taken down right now in the notes, correct?
Right.
Could, could we just say, you know, maybe attach the, the notes to our meeting? To the recommendation or I'm sorry, the minutes, I'm sorry.
Or maybe even better yet, the recording, we could refer to the recording and.
Have them available or at least let them know that, you know, we had a discussion and, you know, this is our discussion if they want to refer back to why we. Chose this and then we don't have to, you know, stay too long on this other point of just kind of re-going over what we just discussed.
Right, I agree with that and, and maybe just some, you know, not highlights of the actual description, but maybe. The bullet points of different topics that were discussed and that they should refer to the. However, you want to refer, for them to, to. The information and more depth to our conversation.
So I think, I think, does that sound reasonable, Lori, as a way to move forward on that? We can. Okay, so I think Lori's, you know, expressed at least a general motion. So anybody's free to. Reiterate that or make their own motion. So why don't we? Move on to a motion.
Okay, I said I would do the motion. So Lori, would you please, for the record, state the motion that is necessary?
The planning commission, the planning commission moves that, that Kenmore be nominated, that Kenmore downtown be nominated as a candidate countywide center.
I move, I so move based upon what she just read into the record.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion second to. The council that Kenmore pursue designation as the candidate countywide center. Any further discussion on the motion?
Can we agree that the intent of the commission is for the staff to. Lightly summarize and provide. A tape of our conversation. Toward the motion for the council's deliberations.
I think we can. I think that's what Lori expressed, right? That's the intent. So I think we're, I think we're, I think we're good on that, on that front. So.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted so the staff is free to do what they need to do. And we're all happy.
Think they got the. Think they got it, got it down. So. Okay, so I guess we're ready for, now we've had a motion second. Any further discussion?
Just a request. When you. Finalized the submission, could we see a copy of that? Could that come back to the commission just as an FYI?
Finalize the.
No, I said the final version of the.
Oh, the agenda bill. Right, yeah. I, I think that's typically sent out to the planning commission.
Oh, no, no, no. I think, I don't think there's time because we don't have a planning commission meeting in between.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not asking for the agenda bill. I'm asking for the formal submission that goes to the county, the final.
Oh, 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 in August, right, right, yes.
For information so we, we know.
Definitely.
Where, where this ended up because I have a feeling this would be a touch point for further future discussion.
Okay, any further discussion on, on the motion, which is on the floor? All right, Teal, I think we're ready for a roll call vote, please.
All right, Chair Orangeau.
Hi.
Vice Chair Vanderlin.
Hi.
Commissioner Loutsis.
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson.
Hi.
Commissioner Vanashinsky.
Yes.
Commissioner Olson.
Hi.
Commissioner Greathouse.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, everybody. All right, I think we have another discussion.
Right.
Go ahead, Lori and Debbie.
Okay, so the second question. Really has to do with the intensity of development. In the core of downtown and here's where Commissioner Vanderlin was saying, where is the core exactly? And it's in the area of downtown commercial zoning. And if you were to look at attachment three, or I can pull it up. It's the area that is in, in purple on the north side of SR 522. That's downtown commercial. Zoning and that really is considered the downtown zone. Regional business and downtown residential. Urban corridor, et cetera. Those are not really the heart of downtown. So this is the area again on the north side of SR. 522 zone for downtown commercial between, I think it's. From the edge of the former Kenmore Village site out to about 73rd is where it goes from west to east. And the idea here, and, and this was brought forward actually by the city manager. Who is expressing. I wouldn't say it was a concern, but wondering about sort of the urban fabric of a downtown. And whether continuing to develop. Single-story buildings with surface parking is the vision that the city has for. The downtown. And. You know, a traditional downtown is typically. A main street is maybe two stories, commercial with residential or office above, buildings often built wall to wall. And so. The proposal or the idea was should the city mandate that a building be. A minimum of two stories. And, and the city could do that in a couple of different ways to intensify downtown. One way would be to just require that a building can't be less than two stories. That's easy, but it, it doesn't necessarily result in the desired outcome. Because you could have a very small two-story building. At the back, back part of a lot and you're still not getting that desired character. Now, design standards will help with that and downtown has good design standards. So truly you'd have to pull up to the sidewalk and that kind of thing. But the other way to approach it is through FAR floor area ratio. And that's why we brought this to you several meetings ago, just to talk about what an FAR is. Basically, what it does is it mandates a minimum floor area in a building based on the size of the lot. So if you have one FAR, it means you have to develop as much floor area in your building as there is on your lot. So you could build a single-story building that completely covered your lot if you didn't have all the other rules that we have about setbacks and impervious service and that kind of thing. And that would be one FAR. Or you could build a two-story building that covered. Half of your lot. So the notion with an FAR is that you're, you're getting a minimum floor space. It's not just height, it's actually the bulk of the building. Now, there are certainly downsides to doing something like this and one is that it's likely to be more expensive to develop. Because if you go to two stories, you probably need an elevator, for example, which is not something you necessarily need for a single-story building. Also, you may have an owner who is a single tenant and they want to just build the building for their use. If you go to two stories, maybe you have too much floor space and now you're looking at a multi-tenant building. And so what you're, what you're trying to balance with this question. Is the way a downtown looks and feels, a mixed-use downtown looks and feels with. The additional burden, potential burden on a property owner. So because we are thinking, staff is thinking that we would. Prefer to see that more. Traditional downtown feel, we are recommending that a minimum FAR be considered. We're back here at the policy level. So we are not going to talk about what should that FAR be? What should our setbacks be, et cetera, et cetera? We are not doing that. We are at the policy level and the question is, should the comprehensive plan, for example. Include a policy that says adopt a minimum floor area ratio in the downtown core to support, support multi-story construction. You could make it even more vague. You could say. Adopt standards in the downtown core to support multi-story construction and that would leave open the question of building height versus FAR. Really what we're, where we're trying to go is, is this a policy that the commission is interested in? In, in bulking up, thickening downtown. Essentially to minimize the ability to have a single-story building. And I will tell you that I've, I've looked at minimum FARs in a number of places and sometimes there are use exceptions. There are some buildings that you just can't build two stories. It makes no sense. So. When it gets to the point of zoning, it's going to be a more complicated question. Because we're going to have, we would have to think about things like, well, are all, is this appropriate for all uses? And again, the question of it FAR height. Those kinds of questions, but we're not there. We're at the point of saying, is this something that we think is important and that the city should consider for the future? So that was what I had to say about that. So that was what I had to say about that.
What do you want to ask a question or share a thought?
I can jump in. Reading your, the information put forth by staff and, you know, thinking back to that last presentation we had, I think there are a lot of benefits and structure to using the ratio idea, the FAR, as opposed to the, the height requirement, kind of like what you were saying. You know, the height requirement, it leaves a lot of room to kind of not meet what, what we're looking for in putting, you know, a property at the, at the back of a lot, still having a lot of open lot that maybe they use for something else like surface parking. And I know that's something that we probably don't want to see in the downtown. And so I think an FAR would be a good way to structure that. But as you were saying, Lori, you know, we can leave it vague enough to where we can go from there. But I think that's a very reasonable approach. And I, I think especially considering that it would be kind of isolated to the downtown. And I think you were saying more specifically, the downtown commercial. I have no issue with using the ratio option, the FAR. I, I think that's probably the best way to achieve our focused, you know, density and that's, that's probably the best way to put that in where we want it.
Go ahead, Tracy.
My thoughts are very similar to Nathan's. I, I think of it as a tool, but it's, you know, not necessarily good or bad, just a tool. And if we can use it to help us achieve our overall vision for that downtown area, I could, I support that. I was really grateful that you mentioned that the final zoning will be much more complex and take into things like setback considerations and impervious surface restrictions and things like that. But I, I, I see FAR as something that we could use very well to kind of encourage our vision, including things like setbacks, maybe for pedestrian plazas or bioswales or something like that. So I, I concur with Nathan.
I do, too. Maybe I had a question. How, what does this have any bearing on the TOD then? Is that, is that a separate process, separate designation? Does it have any effects on how that might play out?
I, I don't think it really, the two aren't quite the same. When we're talking about the TOD, what we're really talking about are residential densities and affordable housing requirements. In this case, we're talking about a minimum height for a building, not even the maximum height, which actually does have something to do with TOD. So I would say that they're not, not quite intertwined.
Lori, this policy would impact the TOD, Lake Point, everything that's within what we're describing as the downtown core. No.
No.
What would, would it involve?
It would involve only, let me try to call up this map because I think it would be helpful. So this is Attachment 3 in your packet.
Yeah.
And this black line is the area that has been identified as downtown. This is the generalized downtown map. And it includes a variety of different, this is regional business zone, this is manufactured housing community zoning, this is public semi-public zoning, this is the park and ride lot. There's also, it's probably this gray, the, the key is down here at the bottom, but the gray is probably downtown residential. So the core of downtown, the area that we've identified as DC is the DC zoning. And you can see over here, it's the purple color right here. So it is the area that stretches from here across to the east side of 73rd. So this is St. Vincent de Paul, the monastery school, City Hall is over here. I can't, this is the, the, the red parcels are vacant redevelop, redevelopable parcels, but not all the parcels are shown. So City Hall is over here on 68th. Here's Kenmore Camera, Spencer 68. So it, it's only this area in purple that's on the north side of Botha Way. And because I know you're going to ask me this question, I'll tell you that the zoning over here on 73rd, the zoning extends into the buffer of the Swamp Creek Wetland. But the zoning specifically says you cannot develop in the buffer. You can transfer any density that you might get from this additional property up along 73rd, but you cannot get into the wetland at all, or its buffer. So does that help?
I, I think so, but let me just check my understanding. So it's everything within the black lines?
No, it's, it's only the purple that's.
Only the purple. Okay, the dark purple. Okay.
This, this, can you see my little arrow?
Yeah.
It's right there. It's pointing right at Safeway. It's that purple right there.
Okay. So when we talk about downtown core, we're talking about the purple, which is a separate zoning.
Correct. It's, it's called, it's, this is the downtown commercial.
Downtown commercial. Okay. And there's no downtown commercial outside of there. Okay.
No.
Okay, that, that goes back to my earlier question, just being very clear about what we use terms like downtown core. Depending on the reader, that could mean lots of things.
Right.
Saying that it's downtown commercial is very specific about what we're talking about. Oh, thank you. That helps.
Okay, good. Any other questions on the map before I put it away?
Yes, may I raise one issue related to something that you said, Lori? So I, just because you brought it up, that lot there on 73rd that goes into the wetland and the buffer, I, I appreciate that you have assured us that development cannot encroach on that buffer and has to be pulled up. I I feel like I need, well, I, I need more because I feel like, I, I drive around the city, I go, you know, I go to the park, and I see development being placed right up against critical areas. Like there's a house that they're going to put up on 73rd, right across from Rolla Swamp Creek Park, that I can't, like, there's no way to fit a house in there unless you're putting it right up against the wetland. And so I, like, I hear that you're telling me the words, but I'm not totally trusting them, I guess.
Yes. I can assure you that developing in a wetland or a buffer is not something that happens very often. And I'll tell you a couple, I can tell you how it can happen, and that's maybe what you're thinking about on 73rd. But truly, of all the rules that there are not variances or waivers to, those are the rules. And, and Swamp Creek is particularly protected because it's also shoreline. It also has shoreline rules. It's not just critical area rules, it's shoreline rules. So for these parcels, I, it's my understanding that the, this is the old sheriff's office, and Debbie will jump in if I'm not expressing this correctly. But I believe that the whole back half of these parcels is already in an easement and cannot be developed. It's restricted. There's a covenant already over it. So the only thing that can be accomplished with that would be to move density, if they had any, from back here up to the front, along 73rd. The times when you can develop in a wetland buffer or in a wetland are when you have a case where your property is so encumbered that legally, the city has to let you develop. It's called a reasonable use. The city cannot tell a property they cannot develop. If there's, if their property is totally encumbered, they can get a reasonable use exception to the critical area rules, and we have to allow that. We have to. It's, it's a requirement. It's private property. But the development has to be the minimum possible. And so they maybe can do a single-family house. We may give them a variance to move it closer to the road. For example, if they were, if they were up in here. But that, that is the exception to private development on, in a buffer or critical area. It's not permitted. I would say, there's a lot of discuss, I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing the screen. I can say that there's a lot of discussion about trees and how tree plans are done and that kind of thing. Not the same thing. Critical areas and shoreline rules are, I don't know what to say. They're like cast in stone. And, and
maybe I'll need to.
Highly unusual.
Yeah, maybe I'll need.
There were an exception to that.
Looking into that, that exception because I can't, like, this, I, I don't want to derail us too, too much, but this, there's no, to fit a house in this space, it's gonna have to be like, super close to the sidewalk and super close to the wetland. It's like a very narrow lot. So, yeah. And I don't know. I, I feel like I've seen other instances where development has wanted to encroach in, to a buffer pretty significantly. And where, and, yeah, so I, I need to, I guess I need to do some work outside of this meeting.
You have a particular project that you want me to look at or give you some feedback on? I'm happy to do that if you want to let me know where it is.
Thank you so much.
You're back. Information is always helpful.
Yeah. Oh, so one other point, which I don't have a solidly formed opinion on, but I wonder about the environmental impact of just continuing to put more and more and more pressure on a piece of land that has a covenant on it. Like, is it wise? Should we just keep putting more and more people there? I'm, I'm now thinking about that lot that you showed us on 73rd that's in the downtown. I, I just wonder about that. It's a question for me. I don't, I don't have any.
I think it's always a question of, you can't really, we have rules in there to, to limit developments and have, say, you know, lower density development for protecting single-family areas. And R1 is a good example of that along Swamp Creek, where it's low density for that very reason, because there are critical areas. Or there are rules, like Lori said, where you transfer density out to the critical areas and you build it outside of the critical areas. So it's, it's, it's a balance. But those lots, I mean, we can, we can bring back those regulations and kind of show you where they, how they would work in that area for transferring in those two particular lots, if that's of interest. But I don't think you could probably get to the point of saying no development for private development for the reasons that Lori said, is if somebody has a lot that's encumbered, the laws say you have to allow reasonable use, and it's typically one house with a, this minimum, an input, an impact as can be, but you couldn't not say you can't develop ever.
Is that a state law?
It's, there's been a lot of case law on that. So it's something that we, that's why there are regulations, the city has regulations around a reasonable use. So if a, a private property owner owns a house and it's, it's, it's a wetland or it's wetland buffer, as an example, and there isn't a area large enough to build a house, then that would imply reasonable use. It's a permitting process that you then have to go through and, and come up with something which is the minimum impact to allow a single home to be developed. But you could not say you cannot develop on there. The city cannot do that.
I, I understand that. Just for the public record, I have to say that I'm not sure environmentally that that is a sustainable way for us to move. I understand that's outside the scope of our meeting and it's state law and everything, but I just.
Yep.
We're in this climate crisis for a reason because of how we developed. And so like, I can't, in good conscience, say.
The exception, I think the, the exception part, it's the exception and not the rule.
Yeah.
And I, I think that's what we're, we're trying to sort of limit that as much as we can, recognizing as critical areas. But there is sort of case law, which, which we have to take into account as well.
You know, the way to get around that, of course, is to purchase the property. And so if you don't allow development, it basically is what's called a takings of someone's private property because you're now not allowing them to develop. And, and basically, the, the responsibility is on whoever's taking the property to buy the property. So that's why.
I appreciate, I know the city has done some of that along that quarter, and I, I appreciate that. And I also have thought myself that I wish I had a lot of money so I could buy it all.
Well, back to downtown FAR. I heard from Commissioner Lutzis and Banasinski that they thought it was okay, but I am waiting to hear from others.
Well, I, I'll jump in. I, I'm going to, I do support FAR as a tool. I, I think that's very useful. In the back of my mind, I always have this little voice that says, so if it's economically feasible, why wouldn't the developer do that anyway? And are we losing flexibility when we mandate? I, you know, at this point, I kind of see arguments on both sides. I think for the specific area we're talking about and we've defined, then I think denser development is what we want to have there. So I'm okay with it. Well, this is another one, I think, where the, it's going to be how we, how the city executes that in its zoning and its individual permitting, that's going to make a huge difference here. I don't know what we could do to control that going forward or to dictate what the city would say. Unfortunately, I might like to do that, but I don't think we can. But I think just looking at this as a tool and trusting that the city and its elected folks will, will do what's best for the city is the best we can, or citizens is the best we can do. That's my thought.
Anyone else want to weigh in? I, I, I agree that it seems like a really, you know, useful, you know, useful tool. And I get the idea that it's going to, you know, hopefully pretty much eliminate the single-story development. I guess my question is sort of what Mike was alluding to, and that is, how much of an incentive is it for developers to have these, these minimum FARs to get the kind of, you know, more dense development that we're looking for in, in our downtown area? Is there other, I mean, is there, you know, you mentioned Seattle and other jurisdictions where it's gone in. Has it, you know, how do developers look at this? Is it something that they like, don't like?
Yeah, I, I don't really have any feedback from developers, except to acknowledge that it is more expensive. And I'm sure that there are, there are reasons for not building two stories. I think the one that is most understandable to me is that you have a, a property owner who is a single-use property owner, and they're building a building for themselves, and they maybe don't need so much floor space. So I, I certainly could understand that that was a downside. On the other hand, when you build a building, once a, a building is built, it's there for a really long time. And so if the building isn't going to fit the vision, that's a long-term problem.
Well, that's a good point, vision. That's really what we're here to kind of share, isn't it? So I guess that's something else we need to keep in mind, so. Anybody else have any thoughts on FAR? Don't call it far, right? That's not right. You're supposed to say FAR.
Some people say FAR, but FAR, I think is more typical. I've heard it both ways.
So anymore, it sounds like there's, it sounds like there's a general consensus, at least supportive. Obviously, there's a lot of details to be filled in, right? But you're just looking again for a
Right.
kind of a policy direction.
High-level policy direction.
So anything more on this from anybody at this point? Sounds like, well, you, you don't need a vote, do you, for this?
No, we'll be bringing back language, so. So the only other thing that I included in the memo was my attempt to summarize the TOD. So the only other thing that I included in the memo was my attempt to summarize the TOD discussion. And I hope I captured all the thoughts and that if I didn't, you'll let me know.
Okay, I'll chime in. Thank you, Lori. Based through what our discussion, I'm surprised you were able to, to get anything coherent out of the whole thing. So this is pretty understandable. The one thing I would just, and this is more a question back to the rest of the commissioners. On the first, well, I thought our conversation, really we were looking for a stronger statement here. Be thoughtful about TOD boundaries. Be aware of critical areas. I'm thinking maybe we really want to be a little stronger in our wording here. Thoughtful, I could probably live with. Be aware. I think something stronger there, something more along the lines of, uh, put up, you know, consistent with our existing rules. Uh, I think we need to be more than just aware that they're critical areas. We need to actively, uh, in, in our planning and in our visioning, protect them and make, make allowances for them. And being thoughtful about TOD, that's such a huge discussion. I, I don't know how to, to really tackle that. We're going to have to be, obviously be thoughtful, uh, but that could go so many different ways. But I'll just leave it there. I mostly related to the critical areas. I think we need stronger language there.
Go ahead, Tracy, yeah.
I thought it was a fantastic, um, distillation of our conversation, Lori. I, again, like, like Mike said, I, it was such a far-ranging, long discussion that for you to distill our main points into something that I read and recognized as true felt really remarkable. So amazing. Um, I agree with Mike about, uh, my, and I think it did come out of the, the discussion. And my personal vision too is like, I would love for us to have a, you've called it, I started calling it thickening in our downtown core. And I like that. And I keep thinking just about calling it a Joe Minicozy spike. Like, I really, I really, I really want that for our downtown. And part of the reason I want it so desperately is because, not only because of the reasons that he talked about it as being, you know, economically healthy for our community, people-friendly and all that. But, but also like, I see it as a real tool for us to strongly protect our critical areas. So I, I would like, love for us to have that spike so that we can not just be aware of our critical areas, but pull back from them and give them the space they need and, and really protect them, you know? Um, see what kind of actually rewilding we might be able to do of them while we're living next to them. You know, I feel like the current way that we've developed and that we look at them is like, yeah, they're there. You know, like, but I would like to embrace them as like a really vibrant part of our, our community at the same time that we, you know, do the kind of development that will also make it a vibrant place for, for people. Um, so I concur on the, the, um, stronger language on critical areas. And then also just in terms of visioning and like seeing the TD, TOD as a, um, it was on the, the second page, I think, of this. Oh, oopsie, I just popped out of this. It was something about, um, seeing the TOD as supporting downtown with more of a focus on residential. I think that that point did come up, just as a larger visioning point, though. I wonder if, I, I was thinking about New York City today as I was thinking about this point. And I was thinking about how they lived on the Upper East Side for a while. And along the avenues, they had a lot of mixed use, like, you know, on the ground floor, it's a cafe or a restaurant or a grocery store. And then above is residential and then on the, um, and so that was the avenues. And on the streets, it tended to be mo- more, um, like brownstone, so like more residential. So I wonder about like, if we can get in our visioning, some kind of vibrant mix where we're not just segregating, like this is the residential part of downtown and this is the, you know, it's like it's more mixed use throughout or so that it's scattered and interspersed. Um, and I was also thinking about Wall Street, you know, it's all commercial. And when you go down there during off times, it's like a ghost town, like there are no people there. Um, and it's not very, it's kind of, everything's big and it's cold and it's not inviting. But if you're on the Upper East Side and some of those areas where there are people living and there are businesses, it's more vibrant. It's, feels cozier to be out and about more, even in New York, it seems more a people-oriented in terms of the, the size of the buildings and the, the scope and stuff like that. So I, 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 I'd love to see kind of a mix like that. Thank you for listening to me.
Anybody else have any thoughts? I, I personally appreciate that. I, I can't remember who came up with it, but people-oriented development, that really, I think, needs to be, you know, underscored and emphasized in, in, as we, as we look at this, so pods maybe as opposed to Todd.
Sorry.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
Where's Mike?
No, that's, that's really great and really important, so. But, um, yeah, anybody else have anything that wasn't captured here? Again, a great, a great summary from, from you, Lori, and so. Like we're good on that one. So anything more for?
Um, I don't have any more business. I, uh, I did think it was probably worthwhile to check in and make sure. Our, the next meeting is July 6th. That's the day after the holiday, so it never hurts to check and make sure that we're going to have a quorum. So I'm seeing, oh, good. Okay. All right. Okay, good.
Yep.
Can I say one more thing? I, I have a compliment for Lori. Thank you for sending that email with the racial covenant.
Oh, you're back.
I, we talked about it and I just didn't expect to hear back about it. So I, I so appreciated that you took note of that and, and sent us more information and, and about the tree, um, presentation too. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, anything more? I guess I'll ask my, my question, I seem to ask it almost every meeting, uh, with the, you know, the reopening on the horizon. Any more word from, uh, the, the folks at city hall about, uh, about reopening?
Um, I assume when you, what you, it's more, more interested on in-person planning commission meeting.
There you go. That's kind of where I was going.
That's where you're going with this. Um, so no, I mean, I think we're currently in phase three, so phase three is Zoom. And I guess the next stage is probably going to come up in another couple of weeks and we'll go from there. But it's unlikely that we're going to probably jump in unless there's an absolute mandate that we have to. So I would say if things continue to progress and we're in phase four in September, we might be back to in-person meetings in September, but it's not going to be sooner than that is what I know today.
Sounds great. Appreciate your, appreciate your updates on that. Thank you. Okay, anything more for us tonight? All right. Well, thank you, everybody. We're adjourned. We'll see you, see you in July.
Bye.
Take care, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.